...meeting from last week. Today's December 14th. Starts always with the calendar and correspondence.
I put the Washington National Guard is here apparently through Thursday. And we're doing briefing with local officials right over at four o'clock today down in the EOC, so I put it on your calendar. I don't know if you're planning to attend or not.
Yeah, I have that on my calendar. Good.
And we have Board of Health tomorrow. And Commissioner Pete, she has the Peninsula Regional Support Network and the Consortium Board on Friday. Starting at nine, and there's an Opportunity Fund Board meeting at 10:30. And the Trust Plans Advisory Committee's having a person meeting on Saturday as well.
And that might be spec for me because I've got to get it from Jamesville, Troy to here on the country. Is anybody else available? I'll call in if I'm running behind.
I just know that we need a commissioner for that.
Oh, it is just beginning to start. Yeah, that was, I cannot unfortunately. I'll do the rest for you until the 34th, I'm working Tuesday anyway, so I have to rush it.
And in the following week, I have transit on Monday, the 21st. Commissioner McIntyre said we were going to get to him.
I cannot go to the Board of Health tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
But we'll be able to go to transit sometimes once. That's how that sorts out.
And then we'll show them more. At least we can tell they have a meeting on 22nd.
I've used it. Let me do this. I got it on just email speed.
Also, I think the 22nd and 23rd, we have some office painting and carpet cleaning and everything rearranging and all sorts of stuff. Predominantly your effect.
Your.
Commissioner Chapman, apparently moving the carpet that I'm going to paint in the main apartment in the copy room.
We are in the copy room.
It gets still the originally brown.
So for the last week, what's the tradition in terms of inactivity in the office? You talk about the last week in December. Typically, we cancel those meetings. The only reason to have one is if there's just something that pops up that of a kind of an urgent nature that requires action immediately. Otherwise, we just allow it to recover from Christmas turkey or ham or whatever meal it is.
This may be more for the press than for you guys, but I believe that Commissioner Valletti is signing a swearing in ceremony this on Tuesday, the 29th, at 9:00 a.m.
I know he told me he hoped to start moving into his office, so Joel was supposed to come that day. Joel was supposed to be hoping the paint would be done and the carpet is supposed to be, carpet should be done and the paint should be dry. So that was his hope. And I know Commissioner McIntyre indicated he was going to try and be out by afternoon on the 22nd.
Well, you're looking pretty started in there. Have you been in there?
I'm out. The only thing left is my coffee cup.
Okay.
Which traveled with me. And my little bottle of paint for my old fashioned pen here, that travels with me too. The only thing I will need is just a computer and have the office, obviously wherever a computer's at. I will need to do some work. Okay. And then on the border.
Yes. Correspondence. A letter from Jonathan Kestine. He's an attorney and he's talking about the public defender.
Okay.
And another one is the resignation of Mary Wegman from the Chemical Dependency Mental Health Fund Program, right? I'm not aware of anything else.
Is that the vacancy that you're going to fill tomorrow, Trish?
That I do not know.
Okay. Thank you, Trish.
You're welcome.
Agreement with Peninsula College and Correctional Healthcare Company to utilize the jail medical facility is a clinical learning location for nursing students. What else?
Good morning.
And, uh, what do you think? We don't care. Good morning, I go.
This agreement is something that our nursing staff has been working with Peninsula College on. And the agreement is between Peninsula College, us, and Correctional Healthcare. And it allows the nursing students to come into our jail as a training site and then have the nursing staff train them as if they were going to ER C or one of the nursing homes. Now they can come into the jail and see that environment as well.
Right.
And it's no cost to us, it's a benefit to the Peninsula College.
There's trained nurses, that's always a good thing.
And our goal is to have interested nursing staff.
Questions, comments?
Do we need to do anything to accommodate students coming into the jail? Anything to back them up?
Okay, 2B for tomorrow, decades. Thank you. Good idea. Recommendation from Health and Medical Services for distribution of affordable housing home assistance. And that look you're going to do?
No, I do like.
I just got our Christmas, that Christmas bet.
She has a different one for every day. Years of them. Well, the Review Committee of the Health and Justice Tax Force has had to do its work. We had a little more money to distribute this year than last year, so we had a total of $90,000 for the Work Health Fund and $350,000 for the Home Housing Assistance Funds. So this is the packet of the recommendations of the Review Committee. It's pretty much agencies that have been funded in the past.
Okay.
Notice there's never enough money to fund every single.
Questions, comments?
I'm familiar with the process to go there. Committee, can you give me the names of the committee that meets the kind of recommendations?
Yes, the Review Committee this year was Dan Baitham, Iva Burks, Abdon Laff, and Candice Pratt.
Does none of these people are directors of social entities?
Okay. Nothing further, it'll be 4B and 4C for tomorrow. Thank you. Washington State Association of Counties election to fill unexpired term on the Board of Natural Resources.
This is to fill the unexpired term of the Commissioner from Clough County who was on this board. And what is it, there's three years left in the term?
Two years left.
Three years left in the term.
Term kind of starts when somebody new comes on board, so it's one of these kind of, if you're elected, you stay for four years, presuming nothing prevents you from the remainder of your term. I just think it's noteworthy that Clough County is once again in the kind of running here, looking at the third or fourth page and the list of all the counties and various exundary bars transfer, bars for transfer lands, which is tax forfeiture back in the day and then purchase plans over the years since. The next closest county is Skagit, almost 85,000 acres, but Clough Farce exceeds that with 93, over 93,000 acres. So I'm just glad that Bill has decided to step up and has got my full support.
So that brings us to the issue. Each county gets one vote and the board can choose to, and we do hold this kind of an election today, at the board session, the board can choose to, in its one vote, vote as a board and indicate the entire vote or vote as an individual commissioner and vote one-third for each of the two candidates, your choice.
Yeah, we can fractionalize and choose, but full support of Bill, so that application, I just request that it's in the tomorrow's consent agenda, so.
Do you have any other questions, Bill? And that is, you'll just continue to bring back the information from the Board of Natural Resources to the board meetings, this analysis and paperwork, so we can ask in the public and kind of follow up a little bit. It's great.
Great, I appreciate that. In fact, I did your.
Yeah, and I had a meeting with Mark Vazias last week. One of the things we talked about is the different committees and shared with him, and he was aware that, you know, I requested to be on this committee and if that happened, there's a couple like this Friday, I'm making the run all over to Swin from the courts. I got a couple of committees that are like, talking about the possibility that, you know, he might want to be involved in this. And he was very open to it.
Yeah, I agree with that. We should formalize this tomorrow, but I intend to, my vote is going to go to Bill. I know Dennis Weber, the other Calhoun County Commissioner that stood forward for this. Dennis is a great guy, but I do believe Bill has all of the requisite background that would have come in handy for me over the last year. I would have had to do probably a little bit less homework. There's not a whole lot of trees that grow at sea, so my experience has been, other than natural resources of the terrestrial kind. So if we could, if we could put this on the consent agenda for tomorrow and.
I want to hear the one seen.
Yeah, one seen. Pleasure the board here for this morning, would we need a motion to do that? I think we could just go back to consensus, but.
Yeah, the board, again, they want my agenda tomorrow.
And so can I anticipate that all three votes will go to Bill here for power?
No, no, unless you decide. Okay, I'll make sure that makes it into the one by the agenda.
Okay. Thank you very much for your support. Thanks for wanting to do it. It's going to be, it's going to be a busy, busy year, so.
And then this has to be transmitted to Association of Counties by end of week?
Yes. Yeah, Trish can just sign. The ballot's a little confusing. Money here, actually, there's no signature and you want to have it. Trish can just attest.
Yes, she has a vote. And say that it was one point of, yeah, she can do both.
Okay. All of that. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee status update.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody was familiar with where we are going. Just a couple of briefings here. The notes from our last meeting were intensed. Where we are, we had a couple of applications that came in, one for the swimming pool, one for a theater. And in order to take a position on those, we decided we needed legal counsel. And so we received that, great advice and led, we did. And the long and short of it is, the, as it stands, the request that the pool had for a, for money for a feasibility study was, we decided that was not applicable underneath the rules. They're quite welcome and we hope they will come back with requests to sponsor like one of their swimming leagues. There's a reason why they put that for any state, it's too bad. On the other one, the theater, what they decided to do is to withdraw their application because that was high thought. Very clearly, we waited for the legal advice to confirm it, but that was for money to make the purchase. And reading the RCD, I mean, that's, you can't use the money that way. So they resubmitted an application. And where we stand on it right now is that we believe that it is something we'd like to fund. However, what we want to do is coordinate with the City of Port Angeles, because they also submitted an application to the City of Port Angeles. And we felt it was wise that we wait until they do physically acquire the property. So we meet again in February and want to take on board some of the things that were discussed by the lawyers to give framework for an application. We don't actually have one right now. And so we'll give people that want to apply for these funds and guidance in the form of a revised application or newly developed application. And then in March, we'll shift to the theater application, if they have acquired the property. And there's additional monies that are being proposed, but we always wait until we know the final dollars that came in from the lodging tax. We're actually out of queue by about 60 to 90 days, so we won't know until March, how we finish this year. Just a heads up for you, in case any members of the public ask what's occurring with regard to the pool and what's occurring with regard to the theater.
Okay. Sounds like the plan. So lodging tax, Department of Revenue, two months behind typically with their reporting more or less. So this month's report will be for October, same receipts, that's basically.
And when the budget was prepared, Jim took a very conservative position, but we value that the tax income is going to be up, but that's not reflected in the budget. And we won't really know until March.
Okay. Questions, comments? Yeah, I like the fact that there's, the LTAC has moved toward a little bit more of a structured approach to the legislative plan. I think that's always a good point. That's great. Indigent, anything else on that? Indigent Defense Services.
Thank you. Yeah, during last week's discussion, I was asked to, well, first of all, I think we all determined, or there was a good consensus, that we just didn't have enough time left in the year before the existing contract ended and, you know, to work through all the issues necessary to do new ones for any one. And, you know, that was really a set of circumstances that we had hoped to be done by September and we just didn't get the, we just didn't get the agreements with City of Port Angeles and City of Swin to work through in time, which then on the consolidated misdemeanor side of District Court to be able to get the bid out in time to really do a good enough job analyzing. So I was asked to bring back what the estimated cost for bringing Superior Court indigent defense as an in-house service and also to attempt to negotiate a one-year extension with our existing provider, Clough Public Defender, within the budget funding. So number one, I did work through the in-house indigent defense just for Superior Court. And again, not even close to enough time to hire and set this up, but still the cost, so that you would know. Superior Court would require 4.6 full-time attorneys for the number of cases that we anticipate, all with at least six months' full-time experience as defense attorneys. And under state law, these attorneys must be paid, benefited, and supported with staff and materials as much as possible in the same manner as their counterparts in the prosecutor's office. So with one senior attorney department head and 3.6 deputy prosecuting attorney threes, which is what we have all of our felony attorneys, 4.6 legal assistants, one each, and $35,000 for supplies and operating costs, my estimate of annual expense would be $947,000 for us to bring in-house Superior Court. Number two, Harry Gassnick and I met for a couple of hours and traded messages back and forth, and we have reached a tentative agreement subject to your final approval for his firm to continue providing indigent defense services to Superior Court, Juvenile Court, and both District Courts, including all of our new obligations to the cities under the consolidated contracts for all of 2016 for $1,140,000 plus the pass-through grant funding we expect to receive from the Office of Public Defense on behalf of the City of Port Angeles. So he and I, in great detail, went over his costs and quite frankly, while this is what we have in the budget, it isn't quite enough to cover what I believe are his variable legitimate expenses, he said. And so we're going to try and work together on finding ways to reduce his expense, small things like maybe we'll handle the shredding, let him come in and put it in our confidential shredding bins so that he won't have a shredding contract. We're going to see if we can, we can let his attorneys hook onto our Westlaw Service through the courthouse, if that's possible. All kinds of little ways to look for, to look for opportunities during this next year to save money. We're going to, we're going to address each one as we go along. So anyway, budgetary impact, the one-year extension would be in line with the 2016 adopted budget. The in-house Superior Court indigent defense estimate of cost, together with the sole bid from Payne Law for both District Courts, of $418,000 would add up to $1,365,000. And that's just too high without a budget emergency versus the $1,140,000 we have in the budget. So my recommendation is that you authorize me to bring back for your approval, the one-year extension contract for Clough Public Defender and then let next year's Board of Commissioners determine the best process to move forward with 2017 and be on.
Discussion. So one of the concepts, I think we're.
Glad to be on the board real quick. Help you out a little bit. Glad to be, it's up to the chairman. So I'd like to withdraw. I bid at this time, I propose for District Court, it's upon this amount.
Let me just say for the record, this is, sorry, William.
Yeah, William. At this point, based upon the consideration of the last meeting that you guys had, talking and the way this going forward, I would win for one microphone. At this time, I would make a recommendation to the board though to possibly allow for a new bid. I would like to bid this year for next year in both consolidated Juvenile, I'm sorry, Superior and District Court. So I appreciate that the board's only, or the recommendation from the county commissioner is that, from Mr. Jones, that it be a one-year. And I'd ask the board to maybe open it up again next year to go forward for a more thorough bid for all of, all of the services. And I'd like to do that then, so. But at this point, I'd like to withdraw my, my proposal and a lot of this due to politics that kind of need to move forward and also just comments and things that were directed at me personally, privately over the last week, that I just decided that maybe it's not in my best interest to do that, so. Thank you for your, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Will. Okay. I think next year's conversation will also include the idea that we run the operation in-house, have individual charge of responsibility to assign legal staff.
It'll be, in my estimation, it'll be totally up to next year's board to decide how best to move forward. It'll be any of a number of ways that are optioned.
Have we ever done that?
We've never done it. We've addressed it. Three years ago, we looked at the possibility of doing that. We looked at the possibility of have a internal employee, basically called an ombudsman, a couple of bigger counties have done this, who then basically runs all of indigent defense. We were looking at it before with both District and Superior Court, having one very senior level judge or experienced attorney and one secretary basically as our employees, and then they would run contracts with all the individual attorneys who would be eligible to apply for. We looked at that and that, that has a, when we looked at it three years ago, that has a possibility of being a little more cost-effective than, in-house is very, very expensive. We pay a lot of money for, and benefit costs and support costs. For instance, neither one of the bids that we got included one legal secretary for every attorney, right? And yet that's what our tradition is for prosecutor's office and what we've paid for. And under the law, if we bring it in-house, we have to do the same thing on the defense side. So it's a very expensive proposition to come in-house. But that ombudsman thing has a chance. And again, three years ago, the decision was that Superior Court, like the old three judges, and we have three new judges now, but the old judges really liked the way it was working, didn't want to make a change. And, and we decided not to try and do it just for District Court, waiting for all the new rules coming out of Supreme Court, which have now come out. So that, to me, would be a very viable option for at least District Court. It would depend on how the judges felt as whether or not they'd want to have that kind of a situation in Superior Court or not. But again, that would take a little while to set up as well. So that's another option.
You know, just following up on your, the idea that you touched on, Mike, that we actually get some people to help us with advice, people that have been, you know, in the legal profession. Of the other options, you know, it seems a little more commercial, but the option that you just described, I'm just not familiar with it. So that's one where somebody coming in and saying, here's the pros and cons of it.
Right. I've got a whole write-up on it, again, showing three other counties that are using that one. And the ombudsman thing that I can certainly share next year with the new board as we go down that path.
In the meantime, still need a contract for next year.
Okay. We'll bring that back next week. It's very nice talking about the specifics and we kind of change it. It's not just as easy as just saying, hey, let's extend, because now there's a whole new set of requirements on both sides. And so we talked about it.
I've got it all figured out.
Well, we've got it mostly figured out and I think by the end, but in the middle of this week, we'll have it all figured out to be able to put in next week's work session or ready or meeting, whichever.
And we're going to stay on track with the question?
Yes. We did negotiate that.
Okay, let me, I took a fair amount of time to just kind of go back and review all the statutes that I could find anyway, all the Supreme Courts over the, the bar association's standards, which are kind of adopted by reference and kind of, they are adopted by reference into our county code. And I will reiterate my discomfort, I guess is probably a good way to describe it, with what really is a monopoly situation or has been. And I don't, I don't say that with any negative intent, it's just that we've, we've had one way of doing it for the past three decades. And so we have, we have managed to, in consolidating this demeanor law and justice with the county in two of our three cities, have managed to reduce some of the overall cost of that for the cities. And so just logically, it would seem to follow that the indigent defense piece of that, there's a lot of pulleys, ropes, levers, gears, et cetera and so forth. And the law and justice system of the county, so it would, it would seem to follow, it would seem logical that somehow or another, we could at least see a, not an increase in indigent, in the indigent cost of that, the cost of providing legal representation of indigent people and that. Instead, it's going up and you said last week, Jim, that you just threw an extra 40K into the budget, just as kind of windage, Kentucky wind. into the budget, just as kind of windage, Kentucky windage, just to make sure that we had enough in the budget. Now it appears that that is going to be soaked up and then some, so that indicates to me that we need to get a better handle on what the cost drivers, on the, the drivers of cost on indigent defense providing that constitutional necessity. So in the, in RCW 30, Chapter 36.26, my take on that is this describes the process of how you set up a department entitled public defender. This brings it in-house. There's a particular section in that chapter that talks about a selection committee. This code hasn't been changed, or this statute hasn't been changed ever since 1969, when it was put into effect. But the selection committee is a county commissioner, one member of the Superior Court from each county, and one practicing attorney from the county. That's, that's a good template for us to think about setting up a study committee, and I'll get to the conclusion here in a couple of minutes. It probably bears some effort, commensurate to the effort that we and the cities have gone to, to figure out how to consolidate misdemeanor law and justice, save costs nearby. Probably demands some sort of effort on the indigent defense side of it. And so instead of the county commissioner here, we're not bound by this statute unless we decide to bring the indigent defense function in-house, make it government employees, all the attorneys, support staff. So we could use this as kind of a model to set up an ad hoc committee to see, to see what the best way to provide this, provide for this is. At the very end of that chapter, the final section points to a full or part-time assigned counsel administrator, which is, I guess that's what we call ombudsman, a sort of pace-rotating assignment thing. The Bar Association's compensation standard talks about comparability if we were to do that function in-house. In other words, if we turn to government employees, they must be compensated in a comparable way with the attorneys and staff and prosecutorial offices. For assigned counsel, the language is different. That's the ombudsman thing, or perhaps the contract thing. For assigned counsel, it talks to reasonable compensation, should be. So what's the difference? And this is the standard that the Superior Court has said we, the studies use in determining how to structure this, how to do it, how to take for it. So I really think that, you know, based on that reading of everything that we've got, and we have, like I said before, we have incorporated by reference the Bar Association's indigent defense standards into our county code, so we're obliged to, obliged to follow that. Excuse me. So my suggestion is, and it might take more than six months, and this is, this is for discussion, but my suggestion is we extend the current contract for six months, create an ad hoc committee with either a commissioner or yourself and an attorney that's a member of the public bar, and as a currently sitting or retired judge, and figure it out. You know, let's, let's take each one of those three ways of doing it, and cost them out, and see what, see if we want to change from where we are currently. And even if we want to keep our current contractual arrangement, we need to figure out how to structure an invitation for bids or RFQs so that we can ultimately compare apples to apples. They may be Golden Delicious versus Granny Smith apples, and at least they'll be apples, and not apples to conquest, kind of like what we saw. So my suggestion to the future board is to do something so that we come to a conclusion, and then we understand by June what's to go into the next year's budget. And then, you know, we can take action to extend the contract further, to round out the budget year, but let's not let this just get on the back burner and just sit there and not have any attention paid to it. I really think after three decades, it's time for us to, particularly in light of what you've just done with misdemeanor law and justice content consolidation, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's incumbent on us to do the same kind of a look at indigent defense and see if we want to do something different, or a firm, or even right now, you know, either way.
If I may, just to add the practical operating component to what I, to my feeling of what I hear you say, is, and I could certainly go back and renegotiate with Harry, but during our negotiations, one of the things we both agreed on was how vitally important it was to him, and how difficult it would be for us to report splitting, splitting the service up in the middle of the year. The information we have to send to OPD, Office of Public Defense, in order to get the eighty-some-thousand-dollar grant that we get every year between the two now that we would be eligible for, is pretty complete, and it goes out in August from the previous year, and it's pretty, pretty intensive. It's about eighteen to twenty pages each year of data and information, and it would just be extremely difficult if we had two different firms or two different sets of things in the middle of the year. I would totally agree with the idea of the new board jumping right on with whatever process they want to do for 2017 and beyond, and get it done by the first of July, and get the decision made, so that we can have time to put in the budget and effect whatever transition we're going to do effective January 1. Because that's what I believe really hurt us this time, is we just got far too late in the year to be able to do an effective transition. So I totally agree with that. The third thing I wanted to say was that my $40,000 Kentucky windage of the increased money above...
Above budget worries.
I understand budget worries. You know, it turned out through the process that I discovered something I thought had already been cured, was that all of the contracted, I think it's fair to say, all of the contracted indigent public defense work that was being done for the cities was being done under the assigned counsel, one at a time, more or less, theory that they really didn't have to compare. I don't think either city was doing any comparisons. And, and as far as, as far, because their cost was a per-case cost of essentially $147 per case in District Court, because they don't do felony court, right? They don't do Superior Court, $147. And so I upped that, that price in my estimate, is where I came up with the forty, to $200 per case, actually, no, $190. I did it for $190, which came up with the $40,000. And when you go through the exercise that we've been doing now for five years to do this intricate comparison, it still didn't pay. You couldn't do it for less than $210, which is essentially what was Will Payne's bid, based on the number of cases we had. You just literally could not do it. So the cities have been getting a, for whatever reason, getting by with Payne significantly less than following the rules of the Supreme Court and OPD the last several years. And as Harry told me, he was catching them up slowly, trying, because they've been, they were way below, and he just hadn't gotten there yet. So I didn't know that going in, when I, when I built the budget. I didn't realize that the cities were not paying what they should have been according to the standard that we're being held to, and it just couldn't be done with an outside firm. Now, could it be done on an individual basis? Because what is the definition comparable? Very different thing. Maybe so. Maybe so.
Well, that's, bottom line for me is that we need, the board needs better visibility into the cost structure and the drivers of cost, so they can make a judgment about which of those three options, options would be the best, right, and the most cost-effective. Because logic would kind of pin to the fact that if you can save money by consolidation, the same thing in some respects might occur, and maybe because of what you said, but it's, you know, this, this has just kind of rocked along for three decades. Probably we need to take a good round turn on it and look at it and structure it in a logical way. And in particular, if it is, you know, if the board decides to continue with the current arrangements of contracted services, figure out what the appropriate interval is to re-repeating that contract, because that, you know, we do a disservice to the Bar Association and the bar and our taxpayers by not having the competitive price discovery mechanism inherent in that contract. That contract is just what you negotiate. And I'm not saying you've been a poor negotiator, but competition is always the best way to discover the right price or something, in my personal view. If, if it takes a year to do that, that's great. I would like to see it happen sooner, but I won't be here, so I'll... But the bottom line is here, we need a contract, so.
I'll bring one back.
It's fine, I recommend a one-year contract, and if your board member wants to bring the issue forward, makes it for discussion with the full board, you're welcome to do that. My preference would be we do a one-year contract and then work on a three-year extension during next year with an association that has served Allo County for over thirty years, and it has appointed directors, and is fully accountable to the taxpayer and the community. You know, competition sounds good. Quite frankly, in government, their services we provide, these are constitutional services, so competition is not what we're talking about here. We're talking about competent, constitutional services. You could make the same case and say, well, if you're going to go down that road, then bid out for private jail services. At that point, why don't you bid out for private police services? At that point, why don't you bid out for private health services? And at that point, why don't you just bid out Allo County government, hoping there's probably businesses and associations that can provide every service we provide. So these are constitutional services. This organization has served this county for three decades, with both Republicans and Democrat county commissioners sitting here. And I, for one, am interested in looking at some sort of competition model for a constitutional service. But if Bill, if you want to bring it forward for discussion next year, we'll put it on the agenda, and we'll see what next year for determine. In the meantime, we need a one-year contract, and then Jim needs to begin, my preference would be instantly begin negotiating a three-year extension, so we have budget certainty. Finally, the board controls these costs through our contract with prosecutor's office. Because these salaries are set to measure with the prosecuting attorney's office, I don't see where competition comes into place. The board controls that amount of money that we pay our prosecutors, and we did that through union negotiations, and they have a contract that will continue for some time. So we already set up the pricing structure, we already have an association, we already have a board of directors. And if you look at the board of directors, once again, their board of directors is head and shoulders above what any individual law firm can compete with as far as public scrutiny, public accountability, their, their presence in this community for decades. Some of those people have served this community for decades. So I think the whole idea of trying to save money has been, that opportunity was somewhat mitigated through fairly lengthy contract with the prosecutor attorney's office, and what these salaries are based on, plus the amount of people we give them, and plus state law. So a lot of it, there's not a lot of money to save here. In fact, our hands are somewhat set through state law, contracts with the prosecutor attorney, and I think that you just are, for me, I just think we have a system that has provided solid constitutional services for our citizens. We've not been sued. I've asked multiple times if someone can mention where we've been sued for indigent defense, a failure indigent defense. We're not hearing from indigent, the indigent community of people feeling they don't get good representation, and we're not hearing anything out of the courts. There's some innuendos, which I think are completely disrespectful and very inappropriate if people are making innuendos or some other, some sort of turmoil of the courts. I've not read about that from the courts, I've not heard about it from the courts, and until that, till judges bring that forward, I think that can seem to take it off the table as well. So for me, public defender's office has been a great job, I continue to reiterate it, done a great job, but if you want to bring it forward, go for further discussion or look at this somehow competition model, we can put it on the agenda, I'll listen to your, your case.
What about if we start with an understanding of the cost structure? Because here's where I'm really confused. The last ten years, every cost center's doubled.
So those are two of the contracts, so look at what the prosecutor attorney's office or salary stands, and read the state law.
And so therein lies...
Before state law changed, we didn't have to meet the standards that we're going to meet.
If therein lies my need for...
So let's just public defender doubling the cost because they, and generally frame all that forward, and so, I mean, if you want to put it on the agenda so that the board next year understands the issues, that's fine.
That's good.
I'm already confident that discussion is allowed.
I think it's responsible, just to look at, and answer your question a lot, everybody in the public to understand whether we go from a $500,000 cost center to a $1 million cost center, and what are those rules?
In all fairness, the board previously went through that process in very public, an open process, and all of the changes were made. We did it, the public knew that the rules had changed, the public knew why the contract was changing, so it's not like we just did it and disregard, I disagree with Commissioner McIntyre, that somehow this hasn't been looked at over the years, it's been very public, very open, and as the rules came down, the board was very educated on the differences of the contracts.
And we did it in one year. The same argument that I said the cities were getting eased into increasing their costs, we did it in one year. We did it believing we needed to beat the, the qualifications according to both the OPD and Supreme Court decisions immediately, and then when we incorporated into our code, we were then, we had no choice. So we got ourselves caught up with the state law that I believe was 2008, when it was promulgated. We did it in one year, over, you know, that four, one budget where we dealt...
The state, yeah. The money from the state, part of an agreement with the state, bringing them up to standard, we did. They gave us some, some...
They gave us a little bit to help, but we did it overnight, and the cities were more or less easing, being eased into it.
But again, this isn't a road project, this is a constitutional right for people, and I have to add at a very different level, I'm all for competition for roads, bridges, and trails, and other services, but this is something that's written in the Constitution. That's not up for just a little bit.
But that doesn't necessarily imply that it's inherently governmental function, therefore needs to be done by public and corporate employees. People are defended and poured by private attorneys all day long, so.
And they're not private attorneys, they're not, they're not...
By contract.
Correct.
But what you may just...
Yeah, maybe it's going to testify next year, it's important to set it...
My problem is, well, at any rate, I think it bears, bears a round turn, so I think we have to...
I believe, I do. I'll bring back a contract, a one-year contract, and then we'll let, next week, and we'll let next year's board do what next year's board does.
Exactly. Okay. Park sparing facilities, what claim deeds, melanated property of Lake Crescent. Want to go up?
You want to?
This is the final component, one piece of property, produced from the county's county. It's the 1.2, and we got a lot of credit for it, for the prosecutor, prosecutor's office that named that. We recommended you... Questions, comments?
Yeah.
Final act?
The meeting's signed, H, or...
Yes. We'll start with Harry.
Meeting in January to start that process.
Okay. 4A for tomorrow, thank you, Joel. Probably works. Agreement with the U.S. Department of Transportation, federal highway administration for services related, C, excuse me, C is in Charlie, at the Struce Railroad Trail and Tunnel Project at Lake Crescent. That was... No, it's... That'll be a new way out of works. We have a celebration then. We have a celebration then.
Yes. I'll go ahead and let Rich bring this up if you want to do it.
It's just our agreement with Western Federal Lands. The park has requested for several years that we use their typical contract organization to design permanent, create a strip of trail, private construction supervision. So, to do that, we have to transfer the funds down there. And they will essentially have the funds in their bank. You know, they put out the contracts for design, which probably have fifty percent designing phase on this, and they want to begin negotiations, take it to a hundred percent designing, and then they'll be, once they refish design, they'll be putting a contract together, which goes with the contract language, go negotiate down with a contract.
So, it's one of the many paperwork steps and financial steps to...
Sure. We may worry with federal funding. We've been working on one section, a contract that is not quite finished yet.
Actually, we're out there tomorrow to do the final walk through on Section D. We complete Section D, and I guess it's all the way down to Lake and sets us up for this project. I have, I just wrote an email this morning and found out that the park is also in the process of transferring an additional $100,000 to this project to complete. So, that's good news. And then, of course, we have the $460,000 of RCO funding that's tied to this project. And as these project funds get expended in documentation of that expense, then it can send that into RCO to reimburse for that half of the funding.
Okay. This is why I've heard this before, because we've got collaboration with the park and really think that we should leverage on it. But my only concern, just ask it straight up, because we're dealing with tunnel and we're dealing with uncertainty, how do you feel we stand right now on the costs with that projected versus, you know, budgeted versus how, you know, how we're progressing on the project? Because you could have some things jump out at you.
Well, yeah, okay. The dirt work part of it, drag work part of it is pretty low, and we do that kind of stuff all the time. But when it comes to the tunnel, that's got to be black holes everywhere.
That's definitely...
That's what is considered. We have had it, we've looked at that fairly closely with a number of different considerations, and it turns out that it's really quite stable. It's not, over the last twenty years, we've thought about a lot of ways to keep rocks from falling in the head. But the consensus from a ton of people who have looked at it and have applied this, I would say it's really needs just the portals beefed up because that's what keeps the rocks from falling down a rock mountain and knocking somebody in the head. But the tunnel itself, there aren't many liner per se at all. There's going to be some, some possibilities, some rock building if there looks like there's something hanging around in there. But other than that, not going to put a liner in it at all at this point. We still have to go, you know, through this process of design and and stuff like that. But right now, it's fairly straightforward. And and there is, we've heard from the public a number of times during this budget cycle and I think that I've got to lie for them, and you know that, you know, where do we stand if the, if the government, if for some reason our federal funding at DC gets jerked and we really need to do, we're concerned about, I see all this money going to the trail, what about roads? You know, most of this is funded up with outside funding, RCO and stuff that doesn't, isn't happening at the root of the worst part. But on page five here, I'll just bring bring it to your attention. It's five and six here. The, it's well set up by our attorneys and agreed to by lawyers that either agency can pull within at, at any time. And we're reading here, if they pull within, they have the obligation to give us everything they've gotten signed up to that point. If we pull within, we've got the obligation to at least compensate them for the work that they've done to that point. But at any time, either agency can stop. And well, well...
So, you've got a, you've got a financial exit.
Absolutely. And it was very important when we, when we, and this came to an agreement with Western Federal Lands the previous time, but other, my intention was well, well known by our prosecutor, prosecutor attorney for roads, and that is, I want to make sure that we always have an active strategy here. So...
I'm not advocating to move back from what you...
No, no.
If it turns out that we have to throw another whatever, half a million or a million dollars, you know, then say, can you look at the rest of our, our projects and tell us about the impact of moving that money to this project?
Absolutely. And none of that would ever happen on any authority. All that's happened on any authority. So, if anything like that comes back in the board. And if I could ask the board's executives, if you consider putting this on the agenda for tomorrow at three, and say this a week, right now, Western Federal Lands is operating on the...
I think it's very long.
Well, we put it on, but I only, I don't want to assume that. I just put it...
This has been discussed from up down and sideways, wasn't what we're doing.
Okay. Appreciate that. All right. Thank you.
Two C for tomorrow. Thank you. I'll take from Phil Kitchell regarding the other issues. Good morning, former commissioner Kitchell.
I don't want to date myself, but I think I can actually recall trains going through this up. And like, you know, we just have been back and forth. Oh, that's a big project. I don't know what happened, if you both pike that area, do there with this one light speed, I guess, on a regular basis. It is spectacular, to say the least.
Been big and crude, just kind of a rickety bike, kind of see how to use it right now.
Well, that's, we were actually out there last, last summer, I think it was the most recent, I think, earlier in spring, and there were mountain hikers going on that trail on that rickety cart. And it's not an area that I want to, I'm not going to put it out there. The key is, if you're going to have enough paper here to last for a while, we'll use that for all this. Some of the stuff that you've got has been sent to you previously. This is some extract material, excuse me, I finally got into my third inkjet printing process, and I got to the point that I had to count it, come in and make, this is a thinner one because you've got some stuff in here reporting. Plus, I have other materials that are available for reference, especially that at some point we want to get to that. I'm going to try to the degree possible, be as concise as I can for this. I understand this is a very complex discussion that has been going on for multitudes of years before him. And when I went back and looked through my materials, I had information that was given to me by Lawrence Guedes and stuff, the board that did the action on some of yours. The information that came out with, that spotted out discussions, different board items that were considered submitted. I just want to preference my remarks and the information that I give is that there is nothing that I'm going to discuss today or that has been discussed that would allow for anybody to violate any federally state law. I mean, we're talking about giving the legal species data and the other things that I think, you know, but obviously, you're not going to circumvent any of that in any of the discussions. I also want to make it crystal clear that as you do and as I do, I have a number of friends that are DNR employees, especially of this region, a number of folks that have retired over the years. And to be bluntly honest, a great deal of my information when I was going to make sure that came to be came from those DNR employees, both retired and retired ones. So, I'm offering a confidence that are meant to be intended to be critical of anybody that works in there. I guess I'm one of the people that's there that would be DNR employees, any voluntary activity. So, I need to be very clear about that as we go. In terms of my activities, since we met and discussed this thing that I have met with several different senators, hard to go, obviously being one, also met with Senator Sheldon, and met with a number of trust beneficiaries, and met with the school superintendents, President Kate Flattery, Cooley Valley, I've met with fire district folks who've talked about revenue. These, you folks have sat through about budget discussions, and you well understand the need for revenue to the county and the junior tax district districts, and that's not any secret. This is a topic of subversion, some of those I have for the first time in my lifetime, Fire District and Forks actually ran a levy. First time. And that has not occurred because of the discussions of revenue, the company and half of these county lands, state here, the four land transfer. But as we get into this thing, I think it's important to understand that the discussions and stuff that we have, the parameters for these discussions are really based upon two, two principles. One is trust law. And trust law is an absolute, it's an intergenerational activity, the first doctrines and those things that have been established in trust law for almost three hundred years. If you go back to when we became an agent. The primary one that I'll reference, and I wrote this into the materials I've actually given you and the materials that I hand out, the printed materials about Schumanian Court case and the paramount duty provisions, but I'd like to read that, kind of set the tone for the meeting. This is from the Schumanian Court case. Quote, "A trustee must act with undivided loyalty to the trust beneficiaries to the exclusion of all other interests. In the context of this case, this means that when the state transfers trust assets such as contract rights, it must seek full value for the assets. It may not sacrifice this goal to pursue other objectives, no matter how lot of those goals may be." End of quote. And that's from that Schumanian Court case. The second one I want to reference is as, having been a former school board member, spent eight years on the school board, it forces, we had issues around a bond that we were trying to pass, with attracting the local economy in terms of, you know, as people tend to support or not support bonds and ledges, especially for schools, the conditions of the local economy weighs heavily into those discussions, particularly with the property tax laws. We had concerns in many discussions, but folks, as to the legal obligations that the state had to provide revenue to us in terms of the school destruction funding. So, we specifically looked at the Old Clearwater Block, which I know you're all familiar with, and looking at what harvest that gave us, and they're trying to gauge, you know, what sort of revenue support we can expect for the government school construction. And the discussion that is going on right now with the SWIM School District and Doc Nacini Kelly and others, or Port Angeles School Board, and they're in the same level of discussion now. And when we came back to this, the discussion with our legislators, they were always centered around the paramount duty provisions from, from the state constitution. So, I have included that in the packet as well. And I'll read that again. It's from Article Nine, Education Section One, the preamble. Quote, "It is the paramount duty of the state to make the ample provision for the education of all children residing within its borders without distinction of purpose on account of race, color, past, or sex." End of quote. So, as you have heard, these discussions go on with the topics around the McClary Court case. Paramount duty provision is one that was the centerpiece for that particular piece of litigation, which is in effect now, and many of you have heard, the state legislature is currently under a court order of a hundred, I believe, $100,000 a day. That's really funny because they haven't made... When we went back and looked at the discussions around the Court case, McClary Court case, and I did just speak with Stephanie McClary last week, to have contacts going into the attorneys that handled the case with the law firm on a scale, and have tried to find out how that particular piece of litigation was pursued, and it turns out it's through the Washington Education Association, which was a surprise to me, and a number of school districts. The interest level and how this relates to tonight's discussion and the report that I'm going to give today is that the piece of that that was missing was this whole area of these trust funds, these common school trust funds, bulk of this, most valuable piece of this, certain south of us in the Old Clearwater Block, which is known as Olympic and Paramount Skateboards. And so, the discussion points that are out there for a number of the school leaders that now have uncredible passing bonds is why aren't we receiving more monies from these common school trust banks? And I'll have some information later on in this report and so that. But that was the piece that was missing out of that McClary, McClary Court case. The discussions that are out there now are that we may well see trust beneficiaries residing in school districts look at, seeing if there's a mechanism by which that whole discussion can now be concluded, made in that previous we decided for. That's just one to list before. I have no idea where that's going to go, but I know those discussions are out there. So, specifically, the one issue that I think has received the most attention in the papers is arroreage. And your packet have included the RCW on arroreage seventy nineteen, three thirty. You can read that, I'm sure it's been included. I will read the last sentence to you to give you the discussion point that we will be anchoring next. "The department shall offer for sale the arroreage in addition to the sustainable harvest level adopted by the Board of Natural Resources for the next planning decade, if the analysis determined to will provide the greatest return to the trust." And that last section, sentence in there is the part I would like to emphasize, but it says, "It will provide the greatest return to the trust." And when you get into that kind of discussion, you look at the levels and methods of harvest that have occurred in this county, and you get into the discussions about commercial thins versus variable density thinning versus regeneration harvest, which are those harvests on a standard eighty, eighty-five, or beyond, the revenue difference from those activities is enormous. And so, when we begin to go back and look at what happened with the previous sustainable calculation from 2004 to 2014, when you get into that, you find that there was a ninety-two million board fee to arroreage level for Cloud County, and that breaks down to sixty-something, sixty-five million for the part of Cloud County's trust lands that are included in the OSF, twenty-seven million board fees for that part which is out. Now, there's also an OSF arroreage number, which is the Olympic and Paramount Skateboards, a 218 million board fee. So, when we look at this, I did, the beginnings of this discussion, Commissioner Peach did the detailed work on this thing, and I'm not going to try to gateplay credit for a lot of the hours that he put in on this thing. But when you go back and look at the arroreage in Cloud County on our state forest, border lands transfer for the decade of 2005, when it started to do 2014, you come up with this document. And this document will show you as an approximation as to the county, operating fund, county roads, different things, revenue, what it is. Now, this, I need to emphasize, this is dependent upon the methods of harvest as well as, you know, prices and market conditions and different things at that time. So, as we get into this, Bill, you chime in at this point, you can have to be out on this thing. But when you go down and look at this, the county, county operating fund, county roads, which I guess is gone, the county operating fund, $2 million county roads, $2,999,900 for not high convenience. The fire district at Forks, the one that just ran bad to run levy out of seventy-two thousand. Fire district in Joyce, fire district for 254,000. You look at your school district, SWIM, general, 249,000. Port Angeles bond fund, eighty, Port Angeles, Joyce, general, Joyce. You go down the list of this document and begin to get a sense as to the kind of revenue that's potentially out there, understanding that this is just the arroreage. This is not the amount that would be part of the sustainable calculation. Now, there's a couple of questions that are surface finance. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice on my pole, but a couple of things of surface finance. Is one, in terms of this arroreage number, it is now entering 2016. These arroreage numbers were from a sustainable calculation that ended in 2000... These arurage numbers were from a sustainable calculation that ended in two thousand fourteen. We've got a two-year lag right now, and they are not close, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but they are not close to coming up with a decision on our next sustainable calculation or on the arurages that existed from two thousand five to two thousand fourteen. I tell you, this is a concern. These state forest border lands transfer were private lands, they were part of the tax base of the named trust beneficiaries, junior taxing districts, it is their money. The county's portion of this, it is your money. And we are now in a two-year lag from when they have begun to begin the discussion as to when these sales will start. And there has been a number of proposals out there, which are, this could certainly say the least, that would actually take these arurage volumes, and we're just talking in Cloud County, there's arurage for Olympic Experimental State Forest, for a number of other timber counties, for a number of other trust beneficiaries, such as cotton schools, that all of these things are sitting out there waiting for some sort of a decision as to when all this is going to start. There's a financial impact in terms of lost revenue here that is, I think, is of some significance and is of great deal concern to the trust beneficiaries, especially junior taxing districts. And in addition to that, if the proposals that are out there, if they fold this arurage into the next sustainable calculation, you will not realize these dollars. What happens is this, is it goes into the next sustainable calculation, when the judiciary repeats itself, ten years from now, we'll be talking about the arurage from the next sustainable calculation. So I would just flag this for you, but I say this is the real number, there is an RCW that addresses this as to whether or not the Board of Natural Resources decides in a manner and method that would best benefit Cloud County or the other taxing districts. That's open for discussion. As we went into this issue, and it became apparent that there was one other question which nobody had asked, is that this starting point of two thousand five, there was an existing arurage at that point from the ninety-four to two thousand four, the board made the decision back in two thousand four to fold that arurage. My question is, is that arurage number, which I am supposed to have it by now, but I don't, I'll have it this week though, but there may be, this offer, this is a thought, there may be twenty years of arurage just hanging out there. And I think with the RCW, as I read it, I think there's some opportunity to go and take a look at that issue as well. Bill, do you have anything you'd like to interject with any of this discussion in terms of that? You know, you did a lot of work with it. I will go back and talk about some of the other documents.
Yeah, just really quick, the document that references the junior taxing districts is the analysis that I put together. Phil helped me with information about the tax codes. You have to actually combine two pieces of information in order to do this work. But the, this does not include everything, this is only the county lands, only. There's still a pretty big chunk of property that does not have this kind of an analysis. So actually, when I interviewed last week for the board position, I shared that I'd done this. An issue I see is, why doesn't the DNR have this? I have been trying to get this work cross-checked, because if I've made an error, I'd like to know about it. But DNR doesn't track this. I just, I raised my hand to it. I see an opportunity for some more transparency if this kind of information is being tracked.
The, thanks, Phil. The document Mike and you got there in front of you, I don't have the show, but it was circulated around in nineteen eighty-nine to nineteen, or two thousand fourteen before, has really been, I mean, most helpful. When I first started looking at that, Ruth Gird was the person who generated it, the county treasurer at the time, she was doing that pencil. She was dragging the districts, other than to add that to computer program and stuff that went on pushing. But one of the things exercising, and I did it, I took that document and I looked at the revenues from nineteen eighty-nine to nineteen ninety-eight, and they averaged ten-point-four million dollars a year back to the county. That, in ninety-nine, ninety, when we look forward, going forward, the next sixteen years, that was after the implementation of the Habitat Conservation Plan and other planning activities that took place, that all had the effect of producing significantly less revenues than what we had received from that nineteen eighty-nine to nineteen ninety-eight. The numbers were ten-point-four million a year from the nineteen eighty-nine to nineteen ninety-eight, and nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand fourteen, they averaged five-point-five-eight million per year. The differences there to the county operating fund and county road fund, nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety-eight, they averaged two-point-six million a year. In nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand fourteen, they averaged one-point-four million a year. And so when we look at the impact we have, one, the impact of the money to your county operating fund and road fund, and then the county's junior taxing district. So I will just offer a piece of information from that document, if you look at that and kind of determine where you would.
Yeah, let me, let me just slip in here with some information from the board's decision process for the arurage, the Marble Marlet Habitat Conservation Plan, and the next sustainable harvest calculation. This was in a November board meeting. The board took the decision to analyze five different options for the Marble Marlet Habitat Conservation Plan from a low of, I forget the numbers, I've got it, it's in the materials on the Board of Natural Resources website, but I'll just use round figures. Five hundred thousand acres, which includes all the other previous set of sites for riparian's, owl circles, additional permanent deferrals, new term of ardis, long-term forest cover, everything all added in for all of the Endangered Species Act obligations as stated in the Habitat Conservation Plan, including new ones for the Marble Marletteses. Somewhere between a little north of five hundred thousand acres on the west side, to substantially north of seven hundred thousand acres on the west side, and several different options in between. So those are going to be studied, analyzed, the economic impact of all those options are going to be looked at in parallel. That analytical effort will be completed by September-ish of next year. In the meanwhile, the arurage, let me back up, there are three different decisions that have to be done in parallel because they're all interrelated. The one I've just described is the Marble Marlet, which is the option that's best to fulfill the obligations for the state at the least cost or least impact to the trusts. The second one is the arurage that we've just described. The third one is the next decade's sustainable harvest calculation. All of those are interrelated, so you can analyze them separately, but the decisions, the board has decided to make all these decisions simultaneously, so that you don't have to go back and retrace your steps if you make a decision and say, because we were, we had to consider this, we didn't, so. Those decisions will proceed after September. Whether that gets done by December next year is an open question. But presumably, the board will be informed all throughout the year, so that it should be able to make those decisions fairly soon after all the analytical work gets presented to the board and understood by the board. So I am hopeful, not optimistic, but hopeful, that those decisions will be finalized. Litigation is near certainty. The arurage, I think, presents the least, the least legal risk. I think the legal risk attaches to the sustainable harvest calculation. That's just my own personal assessment. But it is true that the arurage for the last decade, prior to this decade, they were currently in, and was folded into the sustainable harvest calculation. So it was not treated separately to try to catch up. The arurage ranges from a gross number of seven hundred thousand acres to a net number of about two hundred, almost three hundred thousand acres. And it's important to look at both of those scenarios for working the arurage off, because several counties, I think four counties were substantially overharvested over the last decade, just as a kind of a survival mechanism for the department to get through the grain housing crash. And so logically, since each county is, for all intents and purposes, a separate trust, you can't cross-subsidize counties by harvesting one in one county and having those revenues transfer across counties to another county. So the overharvested counties will expect to see less in the way of harvest mitigated by whatever's coming on in the next decade. The counties that were underharvested, Cloud, meaning that by far the most underharvested county, should see an increase temporarily, depending on how long it takes to work the arurage off and harvest rate, so we can, so we kind of catch up. But all those decisions are going to be made in, and if not simultaneously, at least in close temporal connection with each other, because you've got to have all the analytics to make all those decisions separately, and the analytics all kind of blend together. So that's, that's as best as I can tell you about where the board is going to be toward the bottom half of the next year, and see what happens with the analytics and see how fast that gets.
Well, the arurage issue is probably the one that's going to be, I stick your arms around, the other two are going to be a lot more difficult. The next document, and again, you've been sent this, the document that was put out called the Review of Preliminary DNR Snap Reports and Habitat Construction, and then the doctors Bear Letty and Wagner College Forest Resources, University of Washington. This actually was occurring as I was a commissioner. We were tracking this particular information, and as the Habitat Conservation Plan was rolling along, there was increasing concern that there was not a baseline analysis that was done, that we could, as trust beneficiaries in Cloud County and continued, that we could go back and compare the Habitat Conservation Plan and those projected revenues due to see if the factor was an adverse impact. Part of this analogy, the one that kept caught in my eye even at that time, I mean, it's still true, but the one-point-eight million acres that are commercial forest lands and these commercial forest trust lands that the DNR manages are by far, by far, the greatest value of those trust lands. And when you look at that, it's one-point-four million of west side, which is basically everything west of the Cascades, and then four hundred thousand acres that are on the east side which have honestly not a lot of value. So of that nine-point-five billion dollar asset, which Richard Peach pointed out to me was nineteen ninety-five, if we now add twenty years of inflation to that, say twenty percent, two percent a year, or ten, one percent, whatever, it's probably around twelve billion dollar asset that's being managed. And the point I want to make is that the biggest chunk of that resides in or around Cloud County. It's those forest lands from the south of us and the Old Clearwater Block is the biggest chunk by far. Fifty-five thousand acres of these older mature old ripe stands that were the focus of so much discussion. And then those lands in Cloud County, we are in the largest of those county forest border lands transferred. So I would suggest, if you have a chance, if we go through this thing, you know, take a look at it, it's well worth the time. My aha moment for the discussions that came around for, you know, different entities and stuff, came with the next activity that I undertook, which is the review of the DNR's annual reports. The DNR's annual report, two thousand six, it shows that there are a total of two-hundred-and-forty... let me see if I got the number right, two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand acres in long-term deferrals listed in that annual report, which to me, you know, you understand, you're talking about a one-point-four million acre base, and that's a significant amount of that base, and it's, and a lot of it's the most valuable part of that base. Then I pulled up the two thousand fourteen report, the DNR's annual report, which is available on their website, lots of information over there. And that two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand acres had grown to seven-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand acres. And that comprises over fifty percent of this, what is now approximately twelve billion dollar asset. That is an enormous number. I went back and checked, tried to with the private timber companies to get some idea if they had over fifty percent of their asset in deferrals for any reason, whatever. And I could find none, that were in excess of twenty-five percent. Looking at the Cloud County lands, for example, the riparian areas, I can make an argument for eleven percent of that ninety-two thousand acres. There's another portion, but when I went back and looked again at Cloud County's long-term deferral acres and short-term deferral acres, in that two thousand six report, we had forty-eight thousand, forty-nine thousand, almost, in short-term deferrals, twenty-four hundred acres in long-term. When you get to two thousand fourteen, that's jumped to twenty-six thousand acres in long-term deferral. Twenty-six thousand acres out of your ninety-two thousand acre base is now locked up. And I would argue, and I think fairly strenuously, that those long-term deferrals are not long-term as much as they are permanent under the current policies and decisions that have been made. Financial impact of that, you'd have to look at the sand inventory information and determine what it is, but I will guarantee you that your oldest and most valuable sands are included in that twenty-six thousand acres in the now in long-term deferral. That's of some significance to the county. I am, I guess I'm going to say baffled, would be one word, as to how the seven-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand acres occurred, in large part with no action, formal action, but I can see by the Board of Natural Resources, or at least part of it, is, obviously, is part of us owl issues, marlet issues, different things, but I can't track anything to say I put my finger on this as to an explanation. I will tell you that in terms of the DNR's finances, not having their revenue stream from their management fees off of this land base is adversely impacting their ability to operate as an agency. And it's to the point where they now have the highest land management fees that I know of in the nation. Their management fees, I believe, last year increased to thirty-one percent on your federal lands, and it's still, I believe, twenty-five percent on your county lands. I can find nobody in the private sector that's over forty percent. So as we look at, excuse me, if we look at revenues back to the trust beneficiaries, these land management costs are additional. A bigger issue remains as to an explanation as to why we have seven-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand acres today in long-term deferrals. And then some portion of that, or all of that, or maybe in addition to that, is going to be part of the discussions around the Marble Marlet. I offered the opinion and comments to the Board of Natural Resources, that I do not feel the amount of federal land we have in the Olympic Peninsula, that there is a need, that there's a scientific argument that you can make that's valid, that you can make and say we need additional state lands to contribute to the protection of the species. I am not the only one that's making that argument. For those of us that are around during the time of Northwest Forest Land, the discussions around the Olympic National Forest of Congressman Dix were specific as to the reasons why there were to be no matrix lands on the Olympic National Forest. And the arguments that he made, and the arguments that were eventually adopted, were that because we have no matrix lands, the only national forest that I know of that has no matrix lands, the argument that was made for that was that would aid us in not seeing additional acreage put aside in private and state lands for any future listings of species. But yet, what we're seeing is that we have no matrix lands, we have a million acres of Olympic National Park, we have the of Olympic National Park, we have wilderness areas, we have 300-some thousand acres of Olympic National Forests, all with habitat suitable for eating species, that's the Marlboro letter now, and yet, US Fish and Wildlife is going back after additional lands from the DNR. To me, that's in violation of agreements, understandings that we had in the habitat conservation plan, and it violates the ten of those federal lands that Congressman Dix had stated in terms of why we have added matrix lands to the Olympic National Forests. So that is an issue, and I do not have any explanations or offering you any comments as to what we have as options. I will tell you that what I have heard, and I've heard from DNR officials, that there are discussions out there with the agencies as to the benefits from the habitat conservation plan and the benefits from having no matrix lands are now being looked at by a number of people who live here. Whether or not there is a legislative fix possible for this, I don't know. But the agreements and understandings that we had made in the mid-'90s are no longer valid, no longer true. They are looking for additional revenues or additional sentencing upon what they already take.
Phil, I ask a question here. Back when we were, and I'm speaking as a member of the Board of Natural Resources right now, back when we were hot and heavy on the Marlboro letter options before we decided on that, I had heard, you know, I'd had a conversation with Congressman Kilmer, several people had told me what you just said, that there is, you know, there was that understanding pre-Northwest Forest Plan. I look at the Northwest Forest Plan, it does not contain any language, it's a pretty much generic three-statement. It covers all three states, and it really doesn't get down into specifics for each separate national forest. There's no discussion in the Northwest Forest Plan that I can find. Do you know if that is written down anyplace, or was that in any kind of the environmental analysis that, because I could not find that written down.
The matrix lands, the lack of matrix lands is well documented in testimony and the Forest Service information that's out there. I went back, you know, I actually went back to a gentleman named Ray Hirsch, who was a Forest Service employee, in the region for a number of years, and I called him up, answered his cell phone on fire up in the Okiakas. He returned, but he called the fire line, they got there. But he said, my recollection was true. He said, that was a statement that were made at the time that they created the implementation plans around the Olympic National Forest, that the lack of matrix lands there was by intent and was directly attributed to efforts and comments made by Congressman Dix. So when you go back and look at that record, at those discussions that took place, that was something that was broached repeatedly in those comments and uptake. So that, the lack of matrix lands were from the Olympic National Forest was a direct result of input from Congress and Dix. And the intent, and what he intended from that was, is that you would have your late succession, succession reserves, your old growth, and then you would have your adaptive management areas, which are common in all the other national forests, but they have matrix lands included, so that's where your harvest activities. And we, at that time, were harvesting 60 to 90 million horsepower feet a year off the Olympic National Forest, all over, all these over mature, over ripe stands that were harvested coming out. And now, they're talking, you know, 15, 18 million horsepower feet of commercial bins in the adaptive management area, with discussions underway with Congressman Kilmer's committee, as to see if they could expand that maybe to a maximum of around 30 million horsepower feet in the area, that all these things are aligned. But it's a moddable effort, and it's one I hope to continue to pursue, and I hope to hit, because that's obviously an improvement over where we are. In comparison to where we were historically on our Forest Service lands, it's a fraction of the harvest levels that came out of it.
That recollection in people's memories of the conversations that led to the, that led up to the Northwest Forest Plan adoption, would be awfully good to get into the record.
Yeah.
And they are in the record, the sentences at the time. Phil, did you have a?
I'm just going to share, because you're really close to it, in case someone doesn't know the definition of a matrix land. A matrix land is regular forest management. You go out and you conduct regeneration harvest, and zero of that occurs out there on our forests.
Isn't it a national forest?
Not a national forest. And the concept is, if you're not doing any regeneration harvest, and all you're doing is then contributing to eventually building the habitat for, it would lead to old growth scan structure earlier than if you just let it happen by itself.
Okay. Mike, there are issues, I'm going to run through the rest of it pretty quick. I didn't make copies of this, it's too darn expensive. These are the copies of the Board of Natural Resources, Mike had this circulated, you can take a look at them, that's the pretty one, that's in fact, these are areas of long-term forest coverage. Here's a really section, which is the map. Jim, I'm going to send it over to you, but you can do with those whatever you want. But if you're talking about the Marlboro letter, and the areas of the options that they got, those are the details, if you go to that point in the spot and see where they are, so you're welcome to look at those as you want. My next topic, again, I'm going to try to run through this very quickly, but it's the Olympic Experimental State Forest. I went back into two documents that they had, which are in your packets, and this one is from the Policy for Sustainable Forest, talks about the Olympic Experimental State Forest, it's 264,000 acres. I've also included in your packet the language that came out of this document. This is really cute, if you go back and look, and I included the participants on this thing, you look at who participated in this thing, it's General Belcher, Bertie Duncan, the regional list of Burt Falls citizens of this area, it's quite interesting. But out of that group, in 1989, after the report was issued, you come up with the Olympic Experimental State Forest language, the purpose for it, the location for it, the management. I mean, it's, everything in there that you see was what ended up being adopted as this thing moved forward. Talks about the road closures, talks about everything. One that caught my eye in there is that they were to have this management plan in place for the year of adoption, and I did not actually make that date. They also have some discussions as to the impacts of the trust and different information looked at at their discretion. Point I want to make about this, if you look at the purpose of that, of those lands versus what actually happened, is that those lands received no support from any commissioner of public lands, from Commissioner Belcher to Commissioner Kilmer. That plan has sat out there for a course of 20 years now, and has not been adopted, has not moved forward. They have put millions of dollars and thousands and thousands of hours of planning activities and that have accomplished nothing. Frustrations with that are, that document, and if you read the purpose for it, was really, well, there was an opportunity to go into the landscape and experiment with different methods of harvest in different areas, and try to get to where you would receive the revenue that you would expect to have to comply with the trust mandate, and to meet the environmental goals, that I think we would all agree that are probably valuable and worth doing. But in that language was the opportunity to harvest old growth. They would go into these over age stands and take some of this, and then you would create them. And that was the part that never received support from Commissioner Belcher, did not receive support from Commissioner Sullivan, has not received support from Commissioner Kilmer. And I have a communication that came from Commissioner Belcher, we were exchanging letters back and forth, and one of the issues we raised was that, look, there's been no harvest in old growth in the Olympic region since '92, '93. And we asked why, and she replied to me in her letters, no, there has not been any state, DNR Commissioner, at that time, Belcher, sent out a memo, said do not send forest to Olympic any timber sales with anything in it with a diameter over 32 inches DPH, not based upon science, not based upon federal rules, regulations, state policies, that they wanted to put a stop on these over, as older stands, until such time as they completed the habitat conservation plan, the AL surveys or whatever. And again, as part of the issues that came out of it, is really was frustrating, is that with the final, with the adoption in 2005, where the policy got old growth, it was clearly stated that there they would not go into these old stands. With that document being adopted in 2005, the opportunities for the Olympic Experimental State Forest were officially ended. I would say it was killed, but it was never born. It's the second most aha moment I had in this research and data. The first being that 747,000 acres of the now long-term deferral, and then this issue of the Olympic Experimental State Forest, because that was one that we had, well, it was written, John Calhoun started it, but we had a great deal of hope and optimism at the time that I was going to actually move all these debates and discussions forward, did not happen. So that information's in there. I included next the Senate Bill 5574, which is one that we did back when I was in office, that ended up being the second substitute. Senate Bill 5574 was led to the report 96.5, which is in there. I would just, I'm not going to comment on those, if you could read them as religion, but I would say that that piece of legislation had the leadership of the Democrats and Republicans in the House, had the leadership of the Senate, House, Senate Republicans and Democrats signed on to that bill, it made it through, and then I think the study report, the study report's worth reading, it contains a lot of different information, but answers a lot of questions we see floating around. Olympic National Forest, I mean, I think we covered that, I'll go into more details. I've got way more information here than what you probably have, if you ask questions, I can go back and touch on that. I would just say, in summary, I think that this has been kind of an interesting activity for me, to go back and look at those commitments and promises and statements that were made 20 years ago versus the reality of where we are. And I would say across the board, from the DNR, I would say, in my opinion, that there has been 25 years of political and social decisions that adversely impacted trust beneficiaries. I think the evidence of that is the current amounts of acreage you see in long-term deferrals, the evidence of that is in the revenue reports, you go back to the county. I think that the issue and discussions we had around the state forest lands transfer have a direct revenue impact to the county, County Roads, and every junior tax district in. I think it's an area I would, I think Commissioner Chaplin made a statement, that we've spent millions of dollars on fish projects and fish restoration for the last 20 years, and I must say, we spent on these timber issues, and I think it's been a lot. But that's a decision for future boards and stuff. But as big as that issue is, and Mike, you're looking at that report we did, what was the date on that? 97, 97, I believe, so. James Arney's got a lot of information as to actual standing with our information, plus some projections. For revenue, which is in his mind, is over 20 million a year, 59 million horsepower feet. Mike, hats of DNR foresters, or things, make comments to me that Arney's numbers oftentimes are high, so I'm going to take that somewhat of a grain of salt, I mean, I don't want, he's obviously got his arguments and stuff like that. As much discussion as we've had around the state forest lands transfer, I want to disclose with the comments that the biggest issue to this county, to this region, to this state, lies in what's going on south of us in that whole Clearwater Block. There is not a larger or valuable piece of real tape that DNR manages than what's going on down there. And the lack of harvest activities in there have led to the closure of two mills and forks. I think once that mill in Shelton gets up and gets running, you've got to have another purchaser out there. If you see this wood basket continue to shrink, and you add another major mill out there that's going to put at risk the mills that we have existing in this area, and I mean corporate. That issue about the whole Clearwater Block and the lack of harvest down there has implications statewide, and none more so than to common schools and the Common School Destruction Fund. That impacts every school district in this state that's trying to pass a school law. And we have a very, very bleak example of that, with the Squim School District, it was now having a requirement to school districts. We absolutely cannot let our school districts let their buildings run down to their deferred maintenance program where we do not have adequate facilities. That has implications for everybody in this region. We're going to attract people, attract businesses, those school districts are a critical part of that. But beyond that, beyond just the money to the school construction fund, the issue really is jobs. It's 10 people for every million horsepower feet that you see, then you have your indirect jobs. Word often from the Forest Service uses the numbers 8 to 16, when we were talking about Northwest Forest, but I would use 10 as a conservative number. And then you've got two jobs, indirect jobs for every direct job is in that area. So as we talk about this 92 million horsepower feet of arid ridge, the math's pretty simple. You talk about what the potential is in that whole Clearwater Block, and then what is your money about? And how many employment, that is the area that is from, if you look at it, from Elmont to Fort Hills. It's sales tax revenues in every city in this region. When you talk about the kind of deployment possibilities, there is not a bigger economic engine driver in this region than what is existing, standing inventory in that whole Clearwater Block. And the bottom line of this is, you can go beyond all the numbers I've thrown at you, you can go down and talk about the revenues off the state forest lands transfer, you talk about revenues off the whole Clearwater Block, it comes down to your neighbor, it comes down to my friends, those people I know of, that are low income, middle income families that are struggling to get by. It comes to the person struggling to pay his property tax. It's the guy who's struggling to put his kids to school. That's what's on the table. It goes beyond, it goes beyond the money. It goes to the personal impact, those people that are in food banks, clothing funds, where we're sitting on the kind of inventory that had an economic opportunity. It is beyond absurd that we're not harvesting that. We need to do something about that, and that's going to be up to you folks. I thank you for that, and I've still got work I'm doing. I've still got a couple of meetings I've got to be to with some legislators, I've got some folks in Olympia I've got to get to. I've got some additional information coming back on the arid ridge from 2004, and I've got some public information disclosure requests coming in. I'd be willing to share with you your opportunities. With that, I'm putting my report, I'm open to questions, I have more materials, there's substantiated comments I've made, if you would like to look back or read some more. But I think you've got, one, sorry, the last document I didn't talk about is that form that Mike's got over in the front page, and don't have my copy in front of me. That came to me at the Port Enzo Business Association last Tuesday, the Pork Commissioner, McLeary, was hounding that as a document that came to, and I didn't take much of it, but then I scanned through it and took a look at it. And if you are a carbon concerned individual, and I don't want to get into the climate change thing, carbon, you know, climate change deniers, climate change dreamers, climate change whatever, you can go wherever you want. But in that document, it offers the explanation as to the ability our trees have to take carbon out of the atmosphere. And that ability is really within that age range of those trees, 25 to 100 years old. And after you get past 100 years of age, that ability to suck carbon out of there begins to decrease quite rapidly as they get old. And the argument that they're making there of these carbon discussions that are going on, so it's one thing about stopping the amount of carbon we're putting up there, or reducing it, I should say, but a far easier one to get to is the amount of carbon we're taking out of the atmosphere. And when we get into these discussions about not harvesting these over age, over mature stands, there are significant carbon benefits to get those tree types off the ground, that age classification off the ground, get it planted with a new young forest that's going to operate very efficiently. At your leisure, I'm sure, I know if this you guys are, at your leisure, I would suggest you'd be a chance to take a look at that document. But that, I would say, I have done.
Couple other real quick observations that, you know, like you, that the one thing that the board, again, I'm speaking to, the one thing that the board decided not to do was to open the policy for sustainable. not to do was to open the policy for sustainable harvest, or provision in the midst of deciding whether or not to amend the Habitat Conservation Plan, your rear edge, or the sustainable harvest decisions. But I fully expect the Board will, after this go around of significant decision-making, will want to take that up and see if there's anything that we need, the Board needs to change, include, subtract based upon the lessons learned from this round of decision making. Because the Board has to a person expressed the desire not to be back 10 years hence where we are today with a substantial number of acreage, acres and acres. The Board unanimously has expressed a wish, not that any of them will be there at that point to make the decision 10 years from now, but that we don't want to leave a future board the same set of difficulties that we're coping for right now.
Well, you know, it's just the mechanics, just the numbers of what's going on out there. If you look at the amount of the rear ridge statewide, and one of the proposals Mike came out with, American Forest Research Council said, look, let's take that area, harvest it the first two years, and then we will go into the 10 years of the sustainable calculation and do it over a period of years. You know, there's some logic about that. The concern that served us after we started playing with the numbers and looking at their standard interinformation was if you pulled that volume out of the front end of the sustainable calculation, you're probably looking at the next sustainable calculation being somewhere below 400 million worth of feet a year. And the reason being is that they have so much of their acreage base tied up in these long-term deferrals. The concern that's out there is there's a cliff. And DNR is approaching that cliff, I think, fairly rapidly in terms of looking at long-term revenue generation to the trust, the federal trust being the biggest one by far. The counties are 546,000 acres, the feds, you know, that's a big chunk of ground, the federal and the trusts. And so the discussions that you'll hear now is to whether or not that they've got the ability to continue to generate levels of revenue that are significant. The legislators are concerned about this as, as you know, when the trust doesn't generate the revenue, the legislature then gets obligated on the hook to step up and make up some of the difference, especially for that common school destruction. And now, in very poor case, with budgets as tight as they are in different battles, some of this is a perfect storm that's probably going to surface next year, not '16, '17, in the state of Mississippi.
Last little bit of info before we close up is that the landscape plan for the OESF is a decision on that as a commissioner level, policy for sustainable harvest and the Habitat Conservation Plan right now provided for OESF, or how you actually do it OESF, is a decision at the commissioner Goldmark's level. He is, he has a plan and a desire to finalize that landscape plan next year after 17, whatever it is, 20 years of flopping around and trying. So that is something for us to watch, watch more of, certainly as an example. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Tom. It's been an interesting exercise for me.
Not that, it's been an interesting exercise. Be remiss if I missed, you put a couple of things on the record. Rural analysis of money that's been brought in, what is drastically missing is the commodity cycle. And you look at what's happened to the oil recently, the collapse of oil in Alaska's running low on funds, and I think it's patently unfair to just lay all of the lack of revenue of DNR speed because I guarantee you there were site sales, they have put up in the task, but there are no bidders. There are prices, there are market conditions that impacted that. And through the recession, many natural resource based companies suspended their dividends, quit harvesting, were pulled back. You're seeing oil companies now not pumping as much. And so to just say that DNR should just continue to harvest during the greatest recession of our lifetime, even somehow, and the revenue, I think, is, you've missed a big portion of an economy that for a while there was no need for wood, that houses weren't being built. So what were they supposed to do? Put wood up for sale and sell it for pennies on the dollar? I think that they actually did a pretty good job of managing their trust lands, and there were times when they said, we're not going to sell our wood for that value. And I sat in these meetings and heard from them saying, we're trying to market these lands, but there's no bidders, or the bids are too low, or we're going to pull them back because we're not happy with the bids. They actually responsibly managed the trust lands for sustainability for the future and didn't just send product to market when there was no market because in '08, in '09, '10 and '11, there was very little market. So I think it's a little unfair, well, we don't see is what were the prices of commodities during that cycle and what amount of timber was going off those private lands as compared to state lands? So I think we haven't done a thorough analysis of that. I think it's easy to sit here and just lay all of our economic concerns in DNR speed, and I think that that's unfair. There's a lot of other issues to do with our economic concerns. I thought I'd put that on the record. I just find it interesting that we never talk about commodities prices. We never talk about the role of the private sector. What you don't know over those years is money returned back to the trust. Well, what did wages do? Did the private sector pay more wages? Did their costs go up? Did their trucks go up? Did their equipment go up? And so those costs, they can't just do this for free and then turn all the money back. So we don't know what happened to private sector wages. I suspect they fell out. I suspect their equipment has gone up a lot. I suspect their costs went up a lot. I suspect road building costs went up a lot as compared to the early 90s into the 2000s. And I don't think DNR gets enough credit for maintaining a consistent flow of revenue to junior taxing districts. Maybe not a flow that people want, but there are a lot of private companies that just shut off the flow. Companies just last week, two major companies devastated their dividend, and people hold these socks for dividends as a retirement. Did your mortgage? No dividend. 50 cents a quarter, and then they went 12. Three Point Acrane, one of the largest oil, copper and gold producers in the world, they've slashed their dividend and then they finally said, that's a good amount of like a paid dividend. No regard to their shareholders, no regard to retirees, and yet, nobody complains. How do they, you know, where's the outrage? Where's the outrage? Millions of retirees are losing a huge amount as these, and all the companies are right and left, slashing and cutting dividends. And at least, for gosh sakes, DNR consistently returned revenue back to us during a time other timber companies, you look at the history of timber companies and their revenues, up and down, up and down, all over the map, and I bet you if you took a stock chart of some of those major timber companies and looked at their revenues and how they have fluctuated, you might find that DNR actually did a pretty good job.
I'd like to comment on that and to the private sector timber companies.
So I just think we missed that. I think it's unfair to sit here and just say our economic concerns would all be taken care of if DNR would somehow do what we think that they should do, when actually I think they did probably a pretty good job during a recession that was really long and really deep. And I think that now they're taking a look back. But what about when they put sales up and couldn't find no bidders for sales? What were they supposed to do?
Some companies, you know, private as well as being, and I'll use Greys Harbor County as an example, some companies have had sales put up that they did not give in on. That's a fact of life, it's a fact of market conditions. And there's nothing, you know, my scope of work wanted me to go back and look at commodities and compare to it, but I'm thinking that as you look at the snapshot of what's occurred from 1989 to today, and if you're looking at the base that they have to operate on, I'll say that I'm not talking about prices, about revenue generating freedom, the base that they have for generating timber sales on has shrunk dramatically. And the fundamental question for us as trust beneficiaries, counties or philanthropists, was that shrinking of that commercial forest land acreage base, was that for any reasons beyond the requirements of state or federal law? And if that occurred, and there has been a loss associated of revenue, what are our options to do? And I don't have an answer for that.
I just put out of why you sit here and just bash DNR.
It's very clear, Mike, I'm not basing DNR. I'm saying that there have been decisions made in Olympia that have adversely impacted those acres that are available for harvest, market conditions or something else.
It's fairly unfair to blame just DNR for closure of mills, but again, those private companies, and there's a lot of private timber that has gone off this peninsula, where nobody complained, oh my gosh, we're closing mills, and yet millions of worth of feet get on ships and head off board.
For approximately eight years, there was very little of a way of exports for timber. Price, domestic price of lumber, timber was almost identical.
So private companies have to maximize their revenue, but we don't somehow. I just think it's easy, I mean, I get it, it's easy to criticize DNR, and it's easy to say they've done a terrible job, but I don't think that's the case. I think they've done a really good job, and they consistently returned money, maybe not to the levels that people think that they should, but they consistently returned money. And school bonds, one last thing, it's not DNR's fault that school bonds aren't passing. 59.95% of the people in Squim wanted to pass a bond. Now, you run for office, that's a landslide, but because of an arbitrary and really outdated state law, that's a loss. 59.95% of the public wanted to go to the school.
I ran school bonds, and the path, what happens with anything in the way of a school bond, I'll use my experience in forests, is that the local economic conditions at the time of that bond, especially with the property owners, are one of the major contributing factors. After that, we've got the discussion as to the project itself, the merits of the project versus the flaws.
59.95% is a huge majority of it. That has nothing to do with.
But that's state law, that's nothing that you or I have been able to do, and I have actually offered this voting against that, trying to get into a 50% return.
But don't equate school bonds that lose to DNR's lack of.
A large reason they do, Mike, is because you run a bond, there's a dollar value associated with that. If you have a greater match coming in from the state, you're going to run that school bond project for a lower dollar value, which then increases your probability that it'll pass. And that's the reality of what we have to do.
So throughout, most of the.
Yeah, it's frustrating.
You know, that's a 50% vote, so how do I know? You just can't sit here and say, I just want to put that on the record, that I don't totally agree with your analysis, and I think it is lacking. A lot of analysis, it's easy to say for 20 years, DNR's done a nice job, but it just isn't.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm not saying, I'm saying there have been political and social decisions made in Olympia for the last 20-plus years that have ended up reducing the amount of land we have available for harvest activities. And when those decisions are made, I mean, that generates less revenue. The even flow policies, which your point is, is about they are obligated to sell so much per year, all that stuff, I mean, that's very good, that's a very good debatable point, and it's in that one document as to whether you want to tailor your sales to market conditions so when the market goes up, you know, you sell more. And that's a very valid thing, and I support those kinds of decisions. But when you go in, not when, I'm sorry, I said, when one goes in and looks at what's transpired over the last 20 years, and you compare market conditions, if you want to, and compare it to the private sector, you can see that there's these peaks and valleys, which is as you would expect. Obviously, when we have poor economic conditions nationwide, there's less demand for that lumber. But at the same time, that we were seeing reduced lumber coming in or available here, we were seeing lumber being imported from Canada to beat some of the demand that we had. So I mean, I think if you want to have a discussion as to commodities and different prices, that's a very, very flawed discussion, and I agree with you on the thing, that would be a conversation that you should have with Mr. Peach.
Why, instead of sitting there saying, talking about the surveyors, why are we not saying, look, they did a pretty good job during the recession, and now we want to work with them to make sure that as prices come back and as the market comes back, that we did, and that we're at the table respecting the work they do instead of being so adversarial. This community is adversarial to DNR. What are they supposed to think about this? They need to be at the table respectful, first of all, saying, thanks for doing a good job. Thanks for following the state and federal environmental laws, and we're not wrapped up, every sale's not wrapped up in a lawsuit. Holy smokes. Every sale could be wrapped up in litigation if they weren't following the lawsuits. And then saying as a community, what can we do to help you move forward with the land that we think would be beneficial? I just think that'd be more predictive. That's my style. I get it, it's not everyone's style.
I think that is, I think you're right on with that. I think that in large parts, what we have tried for the last 25 years. I think working with DNR, and I've got a ton of friends that are DNR employees that are very high quality individuals and highly competent, and I'm not going to go in there and say that they're doing this correctly or incorrect. I'm saying that we have worked with them to try to get it. But this all has become so wrapped around the axle with politics, that the trust mandate, the trust issues and stuff are ones that are being left behind this region, it's not politics.
I think you're, I think you can afford Natural Resources, it's been applied, they're working through a process. You've got Commissioner Goldmark that's working through a process, but he has federal and state environmental laws that he has to live under, and in the meantime, he's very concerned with returning revenue to the trust land beneficiaries, and his track record in office is that he actually did that. And he governed during a very difficult time, and you look at the track record, it's actually a pretty good, consistent track record.
So you have been revenues generated, there always will.
I just felt I had to defend him and DNR because they did, this report is a little, as much representing the work that I think that they did. And I sat here, and so did Commissioner George, and so did Commissioner Thayer, and Jim sat here, and I'm going to sit here, even the last report, they came in and there was the one sale, they said, we're going, at our time getting a bidder, and I asked why, and there's a lot of reasons. So they, I mean, they do, I just think they do a really good job of managing those. But if people disagree, I mean, we'd be rapidly criticized for making the statement a month ago or so, that I think DNR does a really good job of managing the trust lands.
There are areas where I would agree totally. I would agree totally. I mean, particularly, like with the fire suppression, I would agree with you very much. The issues that come down to are the decisions that have been made out of Olympia, and it's nothing meant to be critiqued of anybody.
There's a state and federal laws that they have to live under.
And the federal laws are the same for forest practices, regulations on private lands. We do a lot of looking, everybody is working under the same Endangered Squeezie Act, same Clean Water Act, same state forest regulations, yet you see in the private sector, 15 to 20% of their land base is now tied up, and you go to the Department of Natural Resources, 50-plus percent of their land base is tied up. And so the question that you ask is why? It is true, the numbers are on their annual report.
Land set aside, if you look deeper than they're important, there's a lot of different reasons why they set aside lands, including, come on, if they just harvested a piece of land, my guess is that gets set aside.
That's not in long-term deferrals, not in short-term.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to put on the record that I think that we as a community would do much better to try to work and support DNR moving forward and not criticize them for passive activities that they don't do, and we as a community would do better on behalf of our citizens to maintain a seat at the table, try to understand, try to bring DNR in, let's promote it, let's fill this room up, so when they give the report, the public can come and listen. Many times I come here and nobody's listening to the reports that the commissioners got. So I think that there's a better job we can do to be, so it's not an adversarial relationship with DNR, but a partnership. We are an arm of state government. We do fund that, we do support it, and they didn't take the fee increase. They asked for a fee increase, what kind of commissioners did they have?
They did on the federal, they did.
For mobile. So there's another thing that commissioners work really hard not to take that fee increase.
One of the other things, I guess I.
We just have to be more positive in what we've been doing.
One of the other things that I would just throw out there for you, that is being discussed, that's going on in this county and other counties, that there's a, the junior taxing districts are now looking at creating something that they're calling the Trust and Beneficiaries Coalition. And then that particular group is the junior taxing districts as opposed to counties are asking how would they can do what you're talking about. How can they get engaged and have representation in terms of these discussions? And I know the Olympic Hospital District, Forks Hospital District, Fire Districts, all the three school districts I've talked to before are having that discussion, and that might be one, you look at the ways that they could do that, to get them a seat at the table, because right now they feel like they're cut out. And I think that's an opportunity to communicate between DNR and those folks, to find out what can they do to get themselves to where they are in this discussion as to these revenue implications.
If they then also looked at the law, the federal and state laws that they have to operate under before they can bring timber to harvest, and understand the difficult challenges they have, that some of these lands are probably now.
It's a challenge.
The laws have changed since the early 90s. They have changed, and so some of these lands are probably non-harvestable because of the law changes. And so that's something the public needs to understand.
And they're no different, those laws are no different for a private timber landowner than they are for DNR, under the same laws?
Let me just share the. DNR inherited their, they have a company. DNR inherited their lands by the company. DNR basically inherited their lands through the chem. Well, so they inherited a lot of lands that I don't think private timber could. Their lands in DNR, if they wanted to put them up for sale, there'd be no bidders for because the private companies.
We'll find that one out, because now we have, in Pacific County and Opaikah County, there's a move to have legislation introduced that would allow them to sell their state forest foreland transfers. And if that occurs, then we will have a really relevant case as to determining what the value of those lands are. I'll be interested, one of the things in this legislature, I expect to see it surface in the day of a cloud, Pacific and Opaikah County, that bill may surface in this legislature. And that has huge implications to those timber counties that are out there. I don't know. We'll see. That's what I'm going to watch. Bill, you were going to offer.
Yeah, I love the conversation, what you guys are stimulating. And I just want to share that one of the things that I'm going to work really hard on, if I am selected to serve that board, is the objective the board has right now to have is zero arid, zero arid ten years from now. And I don't think we're going to get there unless we're able to talk to each other, you know, the old approach with, you know, my bad is bigger than yours. Didn't get us anywhere. And I do think, one, one issue I do see on the horizon is if we don't want to have an arid ridge, we may have to fast up to the fact that there's a lower harvest level. Okay? Regardless of what it is, I just want to see that it is transparent.
We better, better way to go to center harvest harvest recently.
Yeah.
Exactly. That goes in DNR's best interest.
That's, that's going to be central to the discussion at the board level next year. You know, what should the sustainable harvest, how it will be, and how should it be calculated?
And then are there any economic variables that can be put into that sustainable yield? Because I don't know that, you don't know in the next.
You can't, you can't do that. That's, that's, that is, that is very fraught. You've just got to set out a level of harvest. And, you know, that's going to, the, the money that comes from that is going to vary given the market conditions. But you can't estimate your harvest based on what you think market-to-market conditions are going to be. That's just way too difficult to try. But the, the point that comes out of the discussion that you two just had is that all of us, not just county government, but every taxing district that has a property tax levy that then gets a proportionate share of revenue coming off of county lands, is a, is a customer, or better said, a co-beneficiary of the department's trust management responsibilities. The legislature is the trustee, the department by delegations, statutory delegation is the manager of the trusts. And so we need to be well-informed customers, beneficiaries, and as you said, you know, press the department where we think they need pressure, help the department where they need help from us, but have a close connection with the department because that's, that's our obligation with the government. Okay, thanks.
You guys have fun next year. It's going to be, it's going to be fun. Go and enjoy watching. I had to laugh in the discussion with the, not laugh, but the public defender. I sat at this table in the mid-nineties, we had the same discussions around trying to figure out what we need to do to fund that. Yeah. It's a struggle. There's no good thing under the sun. It's, it's tough. I mean, your legal costs are going through the ceiling. You've got limited amounts of revenue to meet those needs. Anyway, I want to wish you all, I don't know if it's bloody correct or not, but I want you all a Merry Christmas. Happy New Year to you and your families. As I, Jim, if I get the information to you, I will get it back to you.
Thank you. All the same.
Yeah, those are on the department's website. I'll, you know, we probably ought to create a little library.
Yeah, you guys keep those if you want. I don't, don't get them off the website and be in there, put them into a library. Anyway, thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
There being no further business, sorry, good in the order. There is one potential item business. I don't have any of that stuff.
I'm good.
All right. And no community development, so we'll adjourn this week's meeting and reconvene tomorrow morning at fifteen to ten o'clock for a regular business meeting and begin next week.
You going to make the P E D develop?